Let's call the meeting back to order. So, we are up to council discussion and direction. Finally, we're here. So, let's everyone take a deep breath.
If I could, I'd like to ask staff, excuse me, Madam Mayor, I'd like to, if I could, through the chair, if I'd like to ask staff to give clarity on what's meant by council discussion and direction. I mean, if we're amenable to the decision tree, this is part of our deliberations that we can start that discussion right now. Is that correct? Or, you want to give that interpretation?
That's correct. I mean, part of the agenda item is a discussion and direction concerning, among other things, the decision tree. And so, if the council wants to, you know, pick one of the five boxes in which to sort of start their discussion, direction, and sort of inherent in that is the deliberations, that's certainly a perfectly, I mean, that was the intent to lay out the decision tree, was to give the council sort of that option to start the discussion with one of the boxes.
Okay.
Is that...
Sure. So, what I was planning on doing was going through the green boxes and seeing where we have consensus, and then going from there. Is that the suggested approach? And then to decide how we want to start. Do we want to look at the proposal from the applicant? Or do we want to look at the planning commission's recommendation?
Yeah. I could certainly make a suggestion.
Okay.
Listening to the public hearings and stuff like that, the majority of the speakers were either pro-housing or against housing, the majority, on all the things that I heard. And I think our starting point should be with the developer's application with the housing portion, because I'd like to know where the council sits. I think the community would like to know where the council sits. And I think the developer would like to know where the council sits. And I think it's only fair that we start there. We just start off with the meat and potatoes.
Okay.
And then work our way through it and see where we go. And if...
Okay. So, you're suggesting starting with the applicant's proposal, so the first green box?
Yes.
As is or modified? Okay. So, is there anyone among the council who's in favor of approval of the applicant's proposal as is?
You know, maybe we should talk...
Or should we talk about it? Okay.
I think we should not be making any decisions.
So, just a comment. I was under the impression that tonight we were just kind of going to discuss the framework for how the deliberations were going to work and kind of what path we were going to take in just planning the discussion. But I wasn't aware that we were like, just gonna get right into it, because there are like a lot of questions that I still have that are unanswered, and we have a big list here. And I just don't feel like I'm prepared to really discuss until I have answers to my questions. Like, I need to know specific things before I can determine whether something is a good idea or not.
So, you're hoping to flush some of those things out right now in our talk tonight?
Are these questions that we can address right now? Or does staff...
Well, I don't know. Staff has a list of all the questions in the staff report, a lot of the questions. I don't know if staff's prepared to answer them, but I just, I talked to Clay in closed session, and I asked him, are we actually deliberating right now? Or are we, we're just talking about the process? And he seemed to mention that we're just kind of talking about the process, not actually starting to deliberate.
Right. Well, I think it's hard to talk about the process without, you know, bringing in our deliberations, at least from a high level. I mean, unless you have like specific things that are, need to be answered before you can even decide which path to go down.
I mean, I think I can choose a path, but going further beyond that...
Sure.
There's still more information that I need.
Yeah. I think that's the starting point.
Madam Mayor, if, could I just, this is probably a great time to just interject one thought before we leave tonight. And that is that we've made our best effort on the staff and the consultants to try to provide information on the, just the sundry of questions that came forward in this process, some of which we've gotten in the staff report and some of which is not fully answered at this point. And we've got various people working on different aspects of it. But to Madison's point specifically, if there's information in terms of the questions that have been asked that are really core to your ability to move forward, then I really would be helpful if we could articulate that tonight, so that by the next meeting, hopefully we can be able to answer at least all of those questions that you've identified as kind of core to that decision-making process.
Okay. Are you prepared to articulate those questions at this point?
Well, I have one major question off the top of my head, but I want to go through the list and pull out some more. But, you know, we had the presentation from the applicant and his experts, and we have one expert saying that liquefaction is of minimal risk on the site. And then, the EIR says liquefaction is of a high risk. So, I feel like we get like all this conflicting information. And the applicant says that, you know, having a solar, or having a, you know, energy farm is not feasible for them. But then, you know, we have reports that it is. So, it's like, I'm getting, we're getting all this conflicted and conflicting information, and I'm trying to figure out what's accurate and what's not. And those are really core, that's really important to know. So, I don't know, like, what source do I deem to be, to be accurate? Because I'm not an expert. So, am I supposed to say, well, the EIR is wrong because your consultant says otherwise? Or do I do the reverse? I don't know.
I think, you know, and those are good, two really good questions. And I think that the staff can take a shot at trying to provide some clarification on those, so that it can help guide you in your determina, determination. It's gonna be a long night. How you determine what's good information and what is not. So, I think we can help you in that process. So, that's, I'm taking notes here, and if there are other questions that the council members have that they would like to see for the next meeting, just let us know.
And I can go through the list again right now to pull some more out. But those are like, off the top of my head, really big questions that I need answered, and I'm getting conflicting answers. So, what do you, you know, what do you do about that?
And Madam Mayor, to that point, I think it's fair to say that, that there is always going to be conflicting information that the council's going to get on a particular project. And part of what the council has to do is to, is to weigh the information it receives and reach what it feels is a reasonable conclusion with that. I don't think you're ever going to have a situation where the, you know, there's not going to be a conflict between experts on anything. I mean, that's sort of the nature of the beast. I think what staff is trying to do with respect to the questions was that we tried to answer the questions that would, that struck us as being the answers that we either had available or had provided prior responses, but deferred some of the questions until the council had made decisions about which way it wanted to go. Because, for example, if the council decided that it wasn't interested in residential, for example, then there's a whole host of questions that sort of revolve around the residential piece, that there'd be no particular good in spending a lot of time and money in researching that if the council's not interested in that particular aspect. So, you know, the, I think the idea was for the council at some point to provide a direction in terms of where it was headed with respect to this. And then if there were sort of questions that needed answers in order to keep that direction going, or to keep the project going in that direction, the staff would answer it, rather than try and provide answers to all the questions that may be totally irrelevant from what the council's interested in.
I just feel like, you know, liquefaction is a very straightforward thing if you know the, how the soil is made up. I don't feel like that's something that should, people should be having differences of opinion on. You know, either the site is subject to minimal liquefaction or major liquefaction. So, to get, like, that's very predictable thing. If you know what the compounds of the soil are, you should be able to know whether liquefaction is going to be present, and how bad it would be determined, you know, depending on how big of an earthquake you have. So, for me, like, to use my best judgment on whether somebody is telling me accurate information about liquefaction, I don't think that that's something that should be subject for debate. You know, either there's gonna be liquefaction or there's not, and I need to know. I need someone to tell me the correct information. You know? Like, I don't, I don't feel like I should have to, have to determine that somebody is, knows their stuff or not. Like, it's, it's how nature works. Either it's gonna happen or it's not gonna happen. There really shouldn't be a debate over it.
Well, I think what Michael's saying is it's sort of like the position of a judge. You know, we're weighing the evidence, and there could be different facts being presented by different sides. And so, they may not come to the same conclusion about liquefaction. So, it's up to us to...
I just don't agree with that. I feel like, you know, it's will.
You know, Madison, there's, I mean, there's gonna be guidelines for how you build at that site. And so, for you, in regards to this aspect, you have to be comfortable with the guidelines that are established. Now, the, perhaps the developer might, their, you know, their geotech person will say, oh, we can do this, these buildings here, and this is how we're gonna do it. And then our peer review, our consultant's gonna look at that and say, no, I don't think so. You're gonna need to perform it at this level. I mean, that's, that's where you have that consultant, that works for you, to make sure that what we put forth is gonna be safe and deals with those issues.
I just don't know how deep into that, like, getting it...
Am I correct with that, John?
I think to the, to Councilmember Davis's point, we can provide information in terms of clarifying what the EIR says versus what you heard the other night. We identified that as clearly a point of clarification required. Again, if we provide that response, and there's further work that needs to be done, we'll, we'll do what we can do to, you know, answer it. And the idea that, you pointed that out in another issue that you find to be critical upfront, as opposed to things that might play out later in your decision process, that's what's useful for us to try to make sure we're being efficient and not answering a bunch of questions that may or may not be in top of mind for you five to make your decision. So, that's, to the extent we get feedback from you as to what you need to know if you're starting in the first box, or the third box, or whatever box you choose, what information is kind of a critical path for you to say, well, I really can't decide that until I know, you know, through this list of questions, X, Y, and Z are really important for me. And I understand these other ones might be deferred until a project comes through. Or, you know, that's just real helpful for us to, so we can give you the information that you, you need and desire.
So, if I may, I read this agenda, and I think the public probably read this agenda, to say that we were gonna be looking at the Baylands City Council deliberation process, not deliberations.
Yeah.
And that's how I read it. And I don't read it as Item 4, Council Discussion and Direction, as being deliberations. And so, I don't think that this is where we should be giving our opinions to the public and to each other at this point, because I don't think that was on the agenda, the way it was written.
I totally disagree. That's a legal thing from him.
In order to determine the process, we have to move forward with our, we have to, you know, our thought process on the substantive, you know, substantively on the application comes into play when determining what the process will be. So, I hear what you're saying, but I, I don't see how we can do it without having a substantive discussion.
Okay. Well, for me, I still have unanswered questions on things that are on the list of questions. I would like to go over it. I didn't realize, and maybe I'm unprepared, and I apologize if I am unprepared for this meeting, to go over the list thoroughly, and I'll get back to staff with questions. I feel I haven't gotten information enough to, mostly, that relates to the EIR and whatever project we are going to ultimately, or I shouldn't say project, vision we have or not. If you want my gut reaction on what box we're gonna start in, I'm happy to give you my gut reaction on that, but that's all it would be.
Yeah. I interpreted the exact same way.
Okay. I got a suggestion. Let's back up on Item A under new business to where it says, Item 2, where it says council questions, and get your questions out. And then...
I got my questions answered on the deliberation process.
Yeah.
I still have questions that I think, as a council, we are going to need to discuss and see what we're comfortable with and what we're not, and where my views are in the, in the information that we were given. I didn't bring my notes for tonight for that, because I was under the impression, and maybe wrongfully so, that to discuss council deliberation process is not that we are into deliberations. I think the public would want to know that.
I mean, I think we would have a big turnout.
I don't think that is where the public is, or what I read out of this agenda.
You know, we're playing semantics here, because you go down to Mayor Council Matters, it says, "City Council Schedule Concerning the Baylands' Deliberation Process." They're gonna use the same thing. It's just, you know, it's being semantical, Terry. Come on. If that's the way you understood it, that's the way you understood it.
That's the way I understood it. And I apologize if that's the case. And I'm, like I said, I'm happy to give you, if, if we're legal to do that, and I didn't think we were, but they say we are.
So, I'm suggesting, if that's the case, if we need more information, then submit the information, whether it be tomorrow or whenever, so that staff has an ability to come back with the information, then we can start deliberation.
Yeah. That's what I've been saying, I've been saying all along.
At the next meeting.
If people have questions, they should submit, let's, you know, submit them to city staff, so that, my hope was that today we would have the answers to those questions. And I didn't realize that not all the questions had been submitted, because I saw in the staff report, there were all those questions and answers, and I thought that covered everything.
Well, there's a lot of questions and very few answers.
A lot of questions have been submitted, but as staff mentioned, it's helpful for them to understand, like, which ones we actually want answers to. Like, which ones are the most important questions? Because if they went through this list, it would take a considerable amount of time. So, what is, what questions are of priority? And, you know, I, I really think that if the public thought that deliberations were actually happening now, we would have...
Public.
A full house. I mean, you've seen how many people have been here, and how many people were here for the very first meeting. I don't think the public is interpreting the agenda the way that you guys are.
Okay.
Wait, I mean, it's, it's...
Remove the word process.
So, let's move this along. Are there any issues that, Terry and Madison, that you feel like you're prepared to give direction on with respect to the decision tree? You know, that you feel like you've gotten your questions answered, or you're comfortable with, you know, having a position on what direction we could go, we should go in with respect to process?
You know, I really kind of liked what Greg mentioned, how the planning commission did it. They talked about, you know, what are the overall goals? What are the problems? And how do you solve those problems? And I think that, you know, with the information that we get back from staff, that will be able to kind of lead the discussion. So, I kind of don't want to pick any of the boxes, to be honest. Like, I like that, I like the way that the planning commission did it. And they talk about just overall, what do you want to see? What is on your wish list? What do you have problems with? And start going on from there. So, I guess it would be develop a new plan, if I had to pick a box.
Okay. Terry?
I would be more in the, modify the planning commission's plan, and I need more information on the EIR in regards to a couple of things that I'll get together with staff on. And I feel that the, we needed to get information about the planning commission's plan and how feasible it was, and what the nuts and bolts on the ground, financial feasibilities were. I also wanted to get better and non-conflicted financial data that was submitted to us that was very conflicted on what the applicant's database, their data source was, and what their report gave. I think it used completely different numbers with, I forget the term, because I didn't bring my notes, because I didn't know we were going into deliberations. But they had enhanced construction methods, I think was the term they used that would bring costs down. And then I also had requested, that I think is very important to me, was the financials, draft remediation, Title 27 landfill closure, an actual plan that what we could see would actually be done. Some of those things that were brought up in the speaker series that we had the other night raised more concerns for me when they were talking about the Emeryville landfill and remediation that they did, and they just consolidated until they could afford to clean it up. And, but those were based on a project that appeared to be abandoned city land, so the city had an obligation to clean it up. It wasn't, shouldn't, it wasn't being shouldered by a developer or by a property owner that had longstanding obligations to clean up the property. And we have a longstanding property owner that has an obligation to clean up the property. So, I think, I'd like to find out what the differences with that were, and what Brisbane's obligation to that would be. So...
Yeah. To follow up on Terry's point, we had, a lot of us had, I know Cliff definitely did, had expressed interest in wanting the financial information about whether it was gonna be economically feasible. When we were comparing, during the economic section, we were comparing the different variants and the community proposed plan, and we were looking at, you know, all the different plans. But we hadn't had any financial information about the planning commission's recommendation. So, it's hard for me to even say, well, why don't we modify the commission's recommendation when I, that, that may be infeasible. So, you know...
Just to answer that, we're in the process, actually, we've got a meeting, a staff meeting tomorrow, to go over some of the cost estimates. And so, we will be able to answer, or at least provide an answer to, to that question. I don't, I don't think it's a yes or no answer, but we'll be able to help you with that.
But that information is critical to figuring out, you know, which of these boxes I feel comfortable with. So, that's kind of the examples of how getting some of that information is imperative to even just picking a game plan at this point, to me.
Well, you know, I think an important part of it is, you know, developers even amenable to the planning commission's plan.
Yeah.
Well, he has said, I mean...
They need to be, you know, in that conversation, because, you know, if they're going like, I don't think so, you know, it's not gonna pencil out for them, nothing's gonna happen. We're just wasting our time.
Right. So, that would, we wouldn't even, it wouldn't make sense to go forward with that box.
Well, I think that, I'm probably more optimistic. I'm more optimistic. You know, I think we can cut through it and get through it and come up with something that, if most people will be happy with. There's always gonna be somebody unhappy. There'll probably be, not everybody will be 100% happy, and that's with any decision we make up here. You know, it's, and this is a big one, you know, and I've been part of this process from the beginning, and, you know, I don't know, I, I feel we need to, you know, and I said it at the beginning, not pussyfoot around, you know? And if you need more information, then you request that information, and let's get moving forward, get the information, then at our next meeting, let's kind of be ready to...
Yeah, definitely.
See where we want to go. And not, not sit there and spin our wheels, because then it just shows that we're not willing to make a decision as a body.
So, before...
I agree. I agree.
So, before...
Like peeling an onion.
When we, if we wanted to pick a box right now, I think probably, and I'm gonna ask this of staff, if we, as individuals, we're going to, or as councilmembers sitting here, were to say we are pro or against, or we would consider or not consider housing at this point in time without having discussion, would we put ourselves in jeopardy?
I would say the answer is no. The, you know, you've heard, you've had information, you know, from the public, and if this council is not interested in a, in a project that has housing, you can give that direction. That's a, that's a planning commission recommendation, or a modification of the planning commission's recommendation, or, I mean, it's really any of the four boxes probably, except the applicant. And if that's the direction, then that, that's the direction. And if there's questions that, that need to be answered, that don't relate to the residential piece, the staff can then, can take care of that. So, the answer is yes.
Okay. Cliff?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lloyd, you know, just looking at these five boxes here, and kind of maybe getting to what Terry had asked. So, you know, if the council lands on one of these boxes, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what's gonna happen. You know, I mean, there are lots of routes that we can take. You know, one of the things that you brought up earlier was about, you know, what are your goals? What's, what's your vision? And I kind of feel like we really haven't gotten there yet. And the planning commissions, the way, the steps that they took seem to help to get there.
If three of us chose box four tonight, it all ends here.
In the, in, you know, in the end, you know, I think...
Yeah. I'm just saying it.
Whatever we, whatever box we choose, we still have to do that process, right? I mean, we still, we still have to put forth a vision. I mean, I, you know, it's a lot easier for me to get to the end game and say, I want to create one of the most sustainable developments that we possibly can. And then kind of back it out, okay, how do we get there? And what's the, what's the best vehicle that'll take us there? But there are a lot of questions, right, that need to be answered. You know, I mean, if you're gonna put housing out there, okay, we gotta make sure that it's, it's gonna be safe. You know, people talked about, you know, if we're gonna have housing, well, you know, it should be affordable. Okay, how do we make sure that that happens? If we're gonna have development out there, how do we ensure that we reduce the traffic situations that could be created? And, you know, we really haven't had that, that type of discussion. I know that staff wants us to, you know, get on one of these things, so that helps them to help us. And I, and so, you can kind of talk about that, Lloyd, so that we can give you direction, so that you can give us the feedback that we need in order to help shape that, that vision that, that should be the community's vision. I mean, I know UPC owns the property, they provided their specific plan, but ultimately end, that what we plan for the site should, should come from, from the community. Lloyd?
I think, you know...
There's a lot there in that question, I know. Sorry.
I mean, one of the comments that was made in the middle of that is, yeah, if you would choose that fourth box, leave the general plan alone, leave it as it is, that's a motion and a second, deny the application, bring us back findings, and don't do anything else. It sounds like, though, and I'll presume a lot here maybe, is the direction that may fit with what a lot of you are saying would be to start with the question of what is the vision for the Baylands? Very similar to the planning commission's process. And we could actually, in that case, start with the commission's basic principles that lay out issues like incorporating the sustainability framework into the general plan. It lays out a process for how the city's land use decision would fit with review of remediation, addressing that question of wanting to see a plan, a definite plan for remediation and landfill closure before approving specific land... remediation and landfill closure before approving specific land uses. And one of the issues that we have from the very beginning is the applicant hasn't submitted one. So we do not have a plan on the table that says this is the plan for remediation. We have concepts and ideas presented and what the city can do and what I've seen a lot of cities do to deal with issues like that where they're dealing at a programmatic level is to start using that concept of basic principles to lay out essentially performance standards. You will meet these standards. So in the commission's recommendation, they lay out that standard as the site will be safe. And then start defining how we determine as a community what is safe. And that would be through a proactive approach in the regulatory agencies review, hiring a third-party consultant to review the studies going into the regulatory agencies from the applicant. And so I think starting with that, commission's recommendation on those policies is you can fill in a lot of the gaps on questions that start dealing with what are the details of how they're physically going to remediate the site? And the answer to that is the applicant hasn't proposed anything yet. So you can lay out fine, then you bring us back a proposal, city would be saying that accomplishes these things. The question in relation to housing, and I saw this in one community, in that case it was do they want to include industrial? One councilman finally exasperated over the issue of industrial, said finally, I don't care what studies you do, you can prove to me up and down that all the trucks coming in and out of the site can be accommodated and all the diesel exhaust won't be a problem and I'm still going to vote no. I don't think it's appropriate for industrial, so I don't think we ought to study it. And, I mean, that became another issue. Why prepare in that community studies on toxic air contaminants and more details on air quality dispersion if they're never going to get there? So that's why I think if you start with the basic principles, layout, you can fill in some of those gaps by setting performance standards, we expect A, B, C from the applicant. You could lay out then going into land use, which is where they next went from those principles, and address very early housing or no housing and under what circumstances would the city or might the city be willing to entertain housing or do you determine as a council? You could study it from now on.
Lloyd, what about something like this? You know, so you have that one option, you know, the last one, and it's on, in the staff report, that's the last, the second to last page, I guess it's number two in the attachment two. So at the bottom, you know, the last one says, develop a new plan for the baylands in lieu of the applicant's proposal and the planning commission's recommendation. Could you come up with something like develop a new plan for the baylands in collaboration with the applicant's proposal and the commission's recommendation? So that then, and then here are these guidelines, there are some things that perhaps are in the applicant's proposal that this, you know, that the council likes, some things in the planning commission's recommendation that they like. We're not, we're not denying either one, but we're using both to help with this process, to go through these different checkpoints, to establish that vision in correspondence with these two proposals. Or is that muddy the waters?
No, not at all. And very simple change of wording would be to say, use the applicant's proposal and the planning commission's recommendation to build a new plan for the baylands. And it could end up like, like one or the other, it could end up something completely different. But it sounds like what you're describing is take the two of them and follow a process similar to the commission as they build a recommendation, you would build your essentially ultimate decision for first general plan level, then you would determine what you do with a specific plan.
And if we did that, it wouldn't require a new EIR?
Might.
Or could it? What would be the threshold?
The way that the secret process in the EIR would fit is once council has come to a decision on what it is you'd be willing to adopt or want to adopt, you would then direct us, you know, staff to analyze, does the EIR address what it is we're wanting to adopt? And so we might look at in some cases updating some analyses, particularly, for example, the one that we were talking about earlier with now the sustainable community strategy is far, maybe far different than the one we had before. And so we would look at, similar to what the planning commission did, when they looked at, this is what we want to recommend essentially, they said, and then they looked at the EIR and they said, yes, it would deal with, the EIR deals with what we want to recommend, there's issues outside of that. And we would do the same kind of analysis for you at the end.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question from what you had said with regards to the example of a council person who said, you know, I don't care what information you bring to me, I'm still going to vote no on this particular issue. And this might be more for Michael, but does that open you up to a potential lawsuit from applicants to say, well, you know, you're not being open-minded and really looking at all pieces of information, you've just said that it doesn't matter what information I bring forward, your mind's already made up? I mean.
Let me finish the, I'll kind of finish the whole thing that was said.
Okay.
And one, they had been through six public hearings, there was testimony on both sides of the issue. And the crux of the argument was the community needing jobs and fulfilling, in that case, the industrial fulfilled the desire for jobs. The other issue on the other side was the industrial was being proposed in the far eastern rural portion of the community and in that case, the council had said, industrial is inappropriate in the eastern portion of the community, I want to see that area kept rural. And you can prove to me anything you want about trucks and diesel and so on, it's still inappropriate. You have on the record with, you look at the entire record of the EIR, public hearings, all the testimony on both sides, partly with residential, it comes down to, does it fit there? So that's part of weighing the evidence as opposed to trying to make something work from an environmental standpoint if you still find that it's an inappropriate location for the land use itself.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I do, Madam Mayor. So, all right, thank you for the clarification, Lloyd, making it a little bit easier for all of us to, you know, kind of get an understanding and get a grip on it. You know, we all have our goals, things that we'd like to see out there, things that our constituents have told us and that we agree with them and we'd like to have them have greater evaluation perhaps, or be incorporated into the plan. You know, when we looked at Parkside, we did hire MIG to help the city to put forth its vision. How do we, you know, give us kind of a, you know, kind of a direction, a potential direction or potential directions that we can go, or routes we can go, that could help the council flush out those ideas? I mean, we have the sustainability framework, but we haven't like really used it in a way that helps us as a tool to put forth those sustainability goals.
Yeah, and that's in the sustainability goals and basically the, because you have so much on the record right now and the commission has already kind of tested a process for you, it did work well for them, Greg is still here, so I'll go ahead and say it and if he disagrees, but it worked well for them to start with those basic policies, the basic principles, and then work through types of land use, land use intensity and so on. And I would suggest that same process. And we can use, have more information because now we have not just the applicant's proposal, we have the commission's recommendation, you have the existing general plan to work from. And so there's a lot more information, you're not working with a blank slate to work from. And one of the very first of the basic principles was to incorporate the sustainability framework into the general plan. And as we got to each one of the individual issues, where the sustainability framework started giving direction, that was worked into the staff report.
Yeah, and you saw, we've seen a little bit of that sprinkled in to the staff reports that you've provided, but you've, for the most part, have stayed out, I guess, you know, waiting for the council to provide you with that direction. So, I mean, that's something for us to talk, is that something we should be talking about now or at the next meeting? Like, is that important? I mean, you know, is, you know, look, well, you know, here we have this framework that we have adopted as a council. We had all of our advisory groups go through it, they provided their recommendations, we've got a recommendation from the planning commission to incorporate it into the general plan. I mean, do we think it's a document that we should use as a tool for evaluating our goals to help us with the planning process for the baylands? I mean, I hope, I hope so, that's all that money and time. But, you know, I think we should as a council, like, kind of give some direction, and that's what they're looking for.
Yeah, okay. I think that would be part of the basic principles that Lloyd is laying out. And the basic principles is, I have a list of stuff off the top of my head, I get it, blah, 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 lay it out.
Yeah.
Of, and then most of it is preservation stuff, keeping things, you know, things that, you know, it can lay out, and I'm sure all of us could do that tonight. Just, you know, and that kind of starts a process. And in the meantime, both Madison and Terry submit their stuff to the staff, I don't think it would be counterproductive to do that. And then when we come to our next meeting, you know, one of the things, one of the basic principles could be the sustainability framework, right, is, you know, Lloyd said that that's where the planning commission started. So we could look at that and then, you know, there may be agreements or disagreements on what our principles are. And then that would start the basis of where we discuss, have a discussion, and then once we kind of work that out, then we can kind of move on from there to establish land uses on what do we have agreement. Is that basically?
Yes, and I tend to like that process, especially on large, complex projects. As I've seen, planning commissions and councils that deal in details, get all the way to the end of their hearings and find out they don't agree on basic principles and can't reach any conclusion. So I think that that works well. If that were the direction, basically to parallel that planning commission's process using their recommendation and the applicant's proposal to build that plan, you've already identified a couple of the core questions that you wanted answered to, you know, get that process going, if there were very, if there were some specific other questions you thought of that need to be addressed upfront, or if there are basic principles you want included as your starting point for the next meeting, that would be helpful.
So just so I can get a better understanding, aside from Terry, you guys don't have any additional questions that were raised from any of the meetings that were not answered at the time of the meeting?
I've submitted about four pages worth of questions, a couple have been answered, but most have not been answered.
Because I think it's, I think it's important, like, I think my questions, the answers to my questions are of value to the four of you. So I think, you know, I want to hear what everyone else's questions are and I want to, I don't want it to just be between you and staff and you have a list of questions and you get answers because I could really benefit from that information too and the public could benefit from that information. And, you know, a lot of times I may not even think to ask the question that you have. And also sometimes you have that question and there are 10 other people with the same question. So I think it would be really helpful for us to like have all of us to share that same information. Because we've asked so, I mean, I know all of us have asked so many questions during these meetings and hearings and we've heard, we'll get back to you.
Yeah, well, you know, I know my questions are public record and I have, I did, I sent it to Greg Anderson, but that was the only email that I sent out because he had come to office hours. But it would be great if we could not, you know, talk about them, but at least see them.
Yeah, well, I think what's been done in the past is if you submit your questions to Clay and then, or Michael, and then, either of them can send back.
Maybe the confusion is we have a list of questions, it's attachment three to this staff report.
Yeah.
And if you're saying there are more questions that you have that were in the record, are you meant to ask or you didn't ask or you wanted to ask?
No, you've put them in the staff report.
Many of them are in there, but they haven't been answered.
I need the answers.
But again, what we're trying, it doesn't have to be right this moment, what we're trying to get to is where you can tell us which ones are decision critical.
I just want to make sure that I tell you my decision critical questions and the answer is not just given to me.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. No, no, it would be provided to everyone and provided to the public.
So, so perhaps we need to come back at our next deliberations meeting and be able to talk about what our vision is and how, you know, we're going to put this puzzle together. But I think the big thing is, and, you know, adding in sustainability is fine, but we have heard that, you know, it doesn't have to be housing to be sustainable. They've had net energy buildings that are industrial, they've got lots of things. So the sustainability framework should be built into our goals or our vision, but I think we need to make that decision on what mixes we want there. And that needs to be our first goal so that we can get the pertinent questions from staff.
You know, Terry, one of the things that, you know, is, you know, has always stayed with me was your comment after we had that one public hearing regarding Parkside and you said, you know, this is the first time I felt like, you know, I really contributed to something, or it was something similar to that, you know, that you felt like you really contributed to making a difference or what, I forgot the exact words.
I think it was something along the lines that that was one of the first times that she really felt that we were working cohesively as a group.
And so, I mean, I would love for us to be able to capture that, right, and to work together in that passion. You know, there might be, you know, well, there's going to be, you know, things that we're not going to all agree upon. But I don't think we should let those things keep us from continuing the process. And then eventually, you know, hopefully we come up with something that we can all say, wow, we really listened to the public, we studied the science and, you know, listened to the experts in sustainability that have presented to us and hopefully will present to us later on in the future.
I mean, at some point, if we don't agree, if we put it to a vote, it won't necessarily matter.
Well, you know, yeah, you know, I mean, there's definitely some other options to get community input, more so than what, you know, the folks that come to the meetings. Because we really do need to have a broader understanding of what the community is really wanting from us to move forward with this project.
I'd like to throw out some basic principles. I'd like to just start that process and throw some out for tonight that I would like to see, that I know are on the top of my head.
Okay.
And staff can print those up. If everybody else is not ready to do it, that's fine, but I want to put my basic principles out there to kind of get stuff rolling at least. And the first one would be is, I want to see the recology expansion happen. I think that's important to our economics of the city. Second one is to make sure we retain Golden State lumber, also for the same reason. Preserve Ice House Hill, preserve the Roundhouse, preserve the Lagoon. I'd like to have Lagoon Road moved north. And in the area where the current Lagoon Road is, I'd like to see that fenced off and turned over to universities to study landfill effects on the lagoon where they take baseline studies and stuff like that, to really get a read on what it is. And I'd like to invite the environmental and biological universities or departments of uni- And I'd like to invite the environmental and biological universities or departments of universities to come and study that. And then eventually, that would be turned over to open space, but it would be many, many years from now, where they can study bioremediation, all these different things. Because that area there is the most reflective of the most recent landfill, and it's also the closest to the landfill, because there's not much dirt on that. And I just want to make sure that we do the Wetland River Park construction also, and how that ties in to the whole project.
Okay.
That's my basic principles.
Great, well, thank you. That's very helpful. Okay, so, what I think I'd like to suggest is that, depending on the schedule, is that we set a date for when everyone on the council, you know, can submit any remaining questions to staff. And then we'll be, hopefully, at a point where we can get answers to them at our next meeting on this, on the deliberations. And that we, that each of the council members come prepared to give their opinion on, you know, what their vision is for the Baylands. What would be the mix of uses? What would be the distribution, the intensity? And regardless of the outcome, what are, what are the basic principles that, that you would like to see? Such as, you know, if you want to see Ice House Hill protected, the Roundhouse, transit oriented development, things like that. And then also, what your thoughts are on the applicant's proposal and on the planning commission's recommendation. Does that sound?
I have something on the side, too, that I was kind of mentioned before, and I talked about with Clay. But, you know, I've heard numerous times from the public really wanting to invite Dr. Lee to participate in this. I don't know as, if as consultant, or as a speaker, or in what format. But I think it's important for me to gauge the rest of the council's interest in that, because, you know, we had a lot of people come and speak the other day, and I didn't really have any input on who came. And so, I, that's somebody that I would really like to hear from. And I think it's important for us to discuss the rest of the council's interest in that, because, you know, that may involve additional funds if we are asking for someone's professional opinion. I don't know the extent to which we want to gather that, but that's something that the community has mentioned, and that's something that I have interest in. And I think that would really guide me in, in my decision making. So, I don't know how we want to tackle that.
Okay, does, perhaps staff can reach out to Dr. Lee and find out if he's available to?
I think we're back to what is his purpose and function. Clay and I had a conversation with him. He had been to a meeting and attended a meeting, and he, you know, certainly, the idea of doing more work for the city on a contractual basis, you know, was something that could be pursued with him. But again, what is the council want from an interaction with him? And what are you looking for, I think, is important, to define a scope and a cost and his availability.
Okay, any thoughts on that? What you're looking for from him?
I think, you know, just to help Madison out here a little bit, I mean, we did discuss this a little bit. I, I think there's, you know, we certainly could have him come and speak to you if you, if you thought that would be helpful. I think the, kind of the thought was that, at some point in time, and it's basically, I think, when the remedial action plans are done, or the Title 27 closure is done, that the city hires a person to represent us before the regulatory bodies. Now, that may be down the line, but there may be some value in having somebody come and kind of talk to you first about how that might, you know, you might approach that. Just, you know.
Yeah, if I may, Madison, so, the, the very first council hearing that we had, he was, he was in the audience. So, so then after the meeting, we talked, and, you know, we've had some discussions. You know, and I asked him that, that question, would he consider being a consultant for, for the city? And, you know, he's, you know, he's fairly old, but he did say that, that he would be willing to help, you know, in some capacity. Not as the, the peer review for, for the council, but in some kind of, of capacity. And so, you know, I've talked with Clay about that, and, you know, again, that's where Clay is coming from. Okay, what type of capacity, or John mentioned that, you know, would Dr. Lee be able to, to help with the process? Because I do agree with you, a lot of people in the community trust him. And I think part of getting community, you know, interest and, and buy-in on whether or not the site is safe, you need to have consultants that you can trust. You know, would Dr. Lee be one of those consultants, perhaps? You know, or opinions? So, but he, he would want to, to be hired. He wouldn't just, like, come and give opinion. He'd want to be paid to provide that, that feedback.
So, what I, what I think is, in light of that information, I think it's important for us to ask, you know, what his threshold is. We could come up with, we want you to do X, Y, and Z, and he could say, well, that's out of my scope right now. So, I think it's more important to go to the source and say, you know, what is your threshold? What, how much time do you think you can give us? And how much do you think that that would have cost? So that we can have a discussion, so we go in eyes wide open and understand what he can do for us and how much we would look at spending and have a discussion about it. Because what might be on our wish list for the amount of time and input he can give, he may not even be capable of that. So, I think it's important to kind of start with him and then discuss it.
We could do that. I mean, we, staff could reach out to him and bring back some options for you to consider.
And it's important for us to know how much it's going to cost, too, before we make any decision?
I think that, you know, having Dr. Lee on board as a consultant in some persuasion would be great and may instill some trust in the process. One of the other things that, having sat on the Brisbane Baylands Community Advisory Group, the BBCAG, we've gotten a lot of reports from the Water Board and from DTSC. On the whole, I have found DTSC to be more encompassing on what they look at and the different items they are willing to look at, where the Regional Water Control Board is much more concerned with one issue, sort of more of a one-trick pony. And they, I believe that DTSC has been better accommodating to the BBCAG and their questions and the information that they've requested than the Regional Water Control Board. And at our last meeting, it was asked what it would take to have DTSC do the oversight on part of this project and the remedial action plans. And the representative from DTSC said, I'd just ask them. And so, I would like to put that out to staff to see if we could have that regulatory board. I know it's assigned to Regional Water Control Board right now. But I would like to find out if that's possible.
Just so to clarify, are you talking about OU2?
The, I didn't bring my map, so.
OU2 and the landfill.
The landfill.
The landfill?
Well, on all of it, they're all interconnected. And right now, it's really hard for the agencies to communicate. And DTSC seems to have a more overarching consideration for toxins and safety instead of just what is going into the water, which is their main concern for regional water control. And so, it seemed to me, and it may be possible, it may not, but talking to DTSC, it sounded that it would be possible to have that. They've got quite a bit of experience with the Schlegel Lock site and how this particular applicant works with them. So, there's some history that I think, and knowledge that could be beneficial. But I think that for Dr. Lee and to find out what his recommendations for the site would be, before we just go ask blind questions, we probably would want to say, we are considering X, Y, or Z, and have more of an information from where the council, what their vision is, on what level of, of investigation, or what levels of toxicity reports Dr. Lee would want to give. Because that's sort of, his specialty is, you know, toxicity and, and that side of it. So, it really depends what cleanup level or what exposure standards we are wanting to put on the site and what we're willing to accept on the site. Because once we have our vision, that's the cleanup level that is going to need to be brought to. But that's all state regulation, so.
But, you know, you know, one of the things that Lloyd had, you know, mentioned is that, you know, and we've talked about this, you know, having that, that consultant who's on our team, who's, who's got a seat at the table. And you're right, the state agencies are going to dictate, you know, the process because of the lead agencies, but we, we control the land use decisions. And so, working with our consultant, whoever that, that will be, you know, can help us alleviate those, those issues and put in whatever safeguards that, that are in already, you know, potential, let's see, and already in, in, let's see, you know, different state regulations that might maybe be a little bit higher than what the CalApa is, or some other standards that are backed by science that our consultant can help us with. Or identifying certain toxins that, you know, that perhaps are not being studied, but our consultant says they should be. You know, so there's, there's, that's, that's why you have that consultant to help with that.
Yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're going to hire a consultant, I mean, you know, I think, and I think, Terry, you kind of hit on it, that if we're going to hire somebody like Dr. Lee, then I think we need to establish a land use first.
Goal, yes.
What we're willing, what we're willing to do. Because I think, Lloyd, you said this at the beginning of the process, and correct me if I'm wrong. I don't mind being wrong. My wife tells me that all the time. Just kidding, no, she doesn't. That housing is one level of mitigation, commercial's another level of mitigation, industrial's another level of mitigation, and that kind of falls in those three major categories. And that if we establish what the land use is, generally, we'll be in one of those three categories. Is that correct, or?
If you think about it as, even as simple as two categories, residential, non-residential, commercial, industrial. And the question then also becomes, for residential land use, this discussion come up in relation to, remember, Schlegel Lock and some of the institutional controls that are, are on that site. What institutional controls are you willing to accept? In that case, it's podium-style housing, not ground-level contact. And those become some of the land use discussions that you might have if you were going to consider a residential use.
Right, and then the others, the, the commercial, industrial. So, whatever we established, then at that point, they, you know, say, well, this is kind of where, you know, going as far as the mitigation measures. And then that's where we'd have a consultant come in as more of a peer, peer review or advisor.
Correct.
That I wouldn't go there, you know, or whatever, you know, that, you know, this is what I would look at, or whatever.
Yes, and that's, that process is similar to the recommendations in the sustainability framework with having an independent review through the regulatory process. It's also incorporated into the Planning Commission's recommendation. The key that you're bringing up is having a land use that would, that the remedial action plan would actually be based on.
Right, right.
Yes.
And then, just, I guess, just to kind of go over the history, then OU1 is regulated by DTSC. And then OU2 in the landfill is Regional Water Quality Control Board. And then, you know, your subcategories is County Health, Environmental Health for Title 27 closure. And then you also got Bay Area Air Quality Management District due to any dust issues. So, and I think your question was co-mingling or getting advice from one?
More, more making DTSC the lead agency on all three sites.
I mean, that's another, you know, route to take, you know, that we can ask for. I mean, doesn't mean we'll get it, but.
That's state, I'm not sure how that, I don't think we have.
DTSC's guy said he could, they could do that if.
Really?
It's possible. They said it's possible.
It was split originally. It was one OU, and it was split to two OU, so I guess they could recombine it if they wish.
Okay, but not the landfill? That's, that's different because of the water, and they're worried more about.
That's not to say we couldn't look into it. The last time the landfill wasn't in play, it was only OU1 and OU2 being consolidated.
All right.
Okay.
I think that, besides the, when I was talking to Randy Burrow, in a, on a separate matter, when we were talking about the landfill, he was saying that the county and the Regional Water Control Board hadn't really come to us with any questions or, or concerns about the landfill, because there was so much soil on top of it, that they didn't feel there was water intrusion. And that's their main worry, is that there's water intrusion through whatever is capping it right now. And granted, that's a temporary cover, not a cap. And so, that they really hadn't had any questions about what's going on at that site currently, or concerns, I should say, because there was so much soil on it that it's, because it has a cap, it's out of sight, out of mind. They feel there's not intrusion of water through the, percolating through it. And I think DTSC would have a broader reach about what's going on with that landfill than just if water is percolating through the subsur, the, the surface cap. So, that's my reasoning for wanting to try to bring in DTSC, because I think they have a, a broader reach and a broader vision on the remedial action plans that would be put in place on the entire site and how to deal with it.
John, are you, are you familiar with any DTSCs remediating or overseeing remediation of any Title 27 landfill closures?
I, I think they have, but we can check that, just to make sure.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's a concern that you have, and we should explore it.
Okay, great. So, is everybody clear? So, submit your questions. Well, when we talk about the schedule, we'll put maybe a deadline on that, and then be prepared.
Also, maybe, like, the list that, that Clark had presented tonight, maybe we also do that as well?
To submit that by email or something?
Yeah.
One comment on that, that, I mean, I agree with all the things that Clark is interested in preserving. Not to say that's, you know, the whole list, but I think that those are all very important things for me. Laura, you asked that, we ask all our remaining questions, and I think that it is going to be obvious when we go through our visions and what we want, and, you know, the answers to some of the questions that are coming through, that more questions are going to come up. And so, it's really hard to have a definitive, okay, questions are due, sorry, time's up.
Right, I want to make sure that everyone submitted the questions that they have, so that when we get to the next meeting, they don't say, I have more questions, and I'm not prepared to go any further until I get those answered. So, that's why I want to have the questions submitted. I want to, I want to be clear.
As best as possible, yes, I.
Of course.
And staff will submit them back to us with everyone's compiled list and answers.
Correct, and if I could have just one more discussion on the, on the questions. What we've attempted to communicate, and I think we just had a good conversation in regards to Dr. Lee, is that the extent to which you kind of know what you want to do from a land use perspective kind of can help determine. do from a land use perspective, kind of can help determine what questions are relevant to be answered at this point in the process. And that, you know, I realize that, you know, one informs the other, but, and the other informs back and forth, but, but, you know, there are, I mean, the staff has looked at the, the world of questions here that we've got and, you know, we could be off for the next four to six months, you know.
Not have anything, yeah.
Literally.
That's a good point.
And, and so that's why, you know, a lot of, I mean, I've had a lot of kind of sleepless moments or sleepless nights over this whole question thing, as John can tell you. I've been badgering him for, for weeks now about how are we going to deal with this. And so, you know, it's, it's a concern on our part that we're, we're trying to be responsive and, and yet, you know, also trying to figure out just, you know, what we can do in a, in a reasonable fashion to help you, your decision-making process, but also help the process move forward. So, you know, whatever you can provide, excuse me, in the next couple, couple of weeks in preparation for the next meeting, and I agree with Councilwoman O'Connell that, you know, as you move through the process, you're going to have additional questions that are going to come out of your deliberations, but hopefully you'll be honing in on your land uses that you are comfortable with. And the ones you're not with, not comfortable with, then that can kind of just get rid of a whole, you know, slew of questions.
Well, in lieu of that, I would suggest us choosing a August date for our next Baylands meeting to give staff ample time to come back to us because, you know, on July 20th, we have a regular council meeting. So those are really kind of back to back. So I want to make sure that, you know, staff really has the time to thoroughly answer all the questions that we're going to bring forward.
Okay, so with that, I think that's a good segue into the next matter. Mayor and Council Matters, discuss the city council's schedule concerning the Baylands liberation process. So we have, we completed a doodle poll giving our availability to staff and we have before us the results of the poll. So we're looking at possible meeting dates of July 19th, 20, or 24th, August 14th, 17th, or 31st. Everyone?
I could do either the 19th or the 24th of July, but I wouldn't want to do them both. I'd prefer the 24th because otherwise we're back to back the 19th and the 20th.
I can do all five. I mean, it's, it's, you know, when we kind of start something, you can kind of push forward.
Yeah, we're not going to just have one, one day.
Every time.
So, we probably want to have a couple of dates that were available. So let's.
I was just starting with those two dates.
So, is everybody available on July 19th and 24th?
So we want to do the 19th, the 25th, and the 24th meetings?
I, I, I personally think, you know, but.
It's a regular council meeting on the 20th, that's.
Are we, are we having that meeting, the 20th?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, I, I'm okay with it. I mean, this, this, you know, we got stuff to deal with and let's just deal with it, you know, it's, it's there. If you have to think about it at this point, then.
There was no availability in, in July from earlier from anybody?
Well, we submitted.
Because there was a lot of dates, but.
So these are the only dates that everybody is available?
This is from the doodle poll?
Because I know there were other dates in the poll. I don't know what the results were though.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to see if I can get some more dates available for August.
Yeah, and I think we need time to look at our calendars because we just received this. So let's take a five-minute break.
Break, okay.
Okay.